Hello?
You all right bud?
All right, how about you?
Oh, can't complain. Mr. Bab, how are you?
What do you know bud?
Oh, everything, everything.
Kayla?
Yes.
Please. Did you get my note to the show?
Um, we've been in contact with them a little bit.
Well, she sent another one to me today.
Oh.
And I told her that I will meet with them. Don't have a problem doing that. But you and Anna will be in the meeting. Go through you and her.
Okay.
And I flipped her your contact information, just so she'd know.
Okay.
Do the lawyer call you today on somebody? Michelle Skaggs.
No.
She's wanting to know if Pendleton is zoning. And I said, Michelle? Her dad and mom live out there by there. And I said, I'm not going to tell you what you can do and can't do. I'm sorry, go ahead. Hi Steve Denny.
Hello.
You got something on your shirt Steve.
Uh, you mean the company?
It's the wrong C.
Come on Willie, you're not running for reelection, that's all right, come on.
All right.
That's my buddy.
The only time I see him.
We'll call a meeting, order a special meeting, Pendleton Council, 28th of September. Have a moment of silence please. Thank you. Brian, you lead us into the pledge of allegiance?
How many politicians should take and fold the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Willie.
Steve Denny is off with the flu I guess. He's here. Hello Steve.
Hello, I'm here.
Okay. Marissa Skaggs?
Here.
Bob Jones?
I'm here.
Shane Davis?
Here.
Chip Bab?
Here. We'll go right in the new business. Have to open this up.
You could write a motion to suspend the special meeting and begin a public hearing, properly notice public hearing on a resolution to consider modification of local income taxes.
Okay, so at this time we will suspend the special meeting, start the public hearing regarding the resolution modifying local income tax. Anybody in the public that wants to speak? Got nobody online?
Let me check, we might have one.
Okay.
Mr. Avery, your last call, do you want to?
Steve, is it only one?
No, there's one other but he's not.
Oh, okay. The resolution? Go ahead Andrew.
Andrew, and I'm the chief deputy prosecutor here in Madison County. The increase to the public safety tax I think is paramount importance for every community in Madison County. What this tax increase would do, this point, percentage increase to the public safety fund here in Madison County would result in about eight million dollars that would be spent between various, go directly to the county and then be divvied up between the county and all the municipalities in Madison County. To receive a proportional amount to the population. Several documents here that include, the first page that you're looking at here is a letter from the Madison County Criminal Justice System. To some degree this speaks correctly to the benefit that this tax would have on the county level. However, what that letter also lays out is signed by prosecutor Rodney Cummings, Sheriff Scott Mellinger, Brian Williams, our chief public defender, and then the six elected judges. The first paragraph of that letter I think is significant because it's really highlight what's dealing with in Madison County compared to other counties of comparable population and budget. To keep it simple, we have a lot of crime in Madison County and it's unfortunate, so that's the reality of the county and the lit. And we've been underfunding our criminal justice system for decades. And it's stark and it's, when you look through any of the data, that becomes really apparent. I mean Madison County, as a county, we send the highest percentage of convicted criminals to the Indiana Department of Correction in the entire state of Indiana. We send the third most in total numbers to the Indiana Department of Correction every year, behind only Marion County and Allen County, which are much larger in population. We're the 13th largest county by population, we send the third most to the Indiana Department of Correction. On the county side, that's reflected like I said, through the various budgets of prosecutor's office, the sheriff's department, public defenders, and courts. Why I'm here speaking to you in Pendleton tonight is that a portion of that public safety fund would come to Pendleton and would be spent according to however this council would like to spend those funds. There is a, it's included in the back of there, there's, the second page there is that public safety fund statute which is just some kind of the lay of the land of the different types taxes, how that works, how that would be, the layout. Simply what would happen is if Pendleton was to vote in favor of the increase to the public safety fund tonight, every other council in this county would have 30 days to vote on that increase. There's a proportional vote allotment that is reflected on that second page, it shows how many votes Pendleton has, County Anderson, and so forth. And if there is a 51% achieved or just more than 50% in that 30 days from the various councils in this county, that tax increase would take effect for January 1st of next year. So Pendleton would start seeing the proceeds, the revenue from that tax increase next year. And that count, this tax affects the entire county, just Pendleton of course. But like I said, those proceeds would go to the county and then get sent back, just like the current public safety fund works now. The current public safety fund is .25%. So to take a step back, Madison County's local income tax is 1.75%. 1% of that is certified shares which dump into various general funds. .5% of that is property tax relief that goes to relieve the property tax burden of certain property taxpayers. And then .25% of our current tax is the public safety fund. And that already, when I explain about it, goes to the county and then gets divvied up between the different municipalities, that's already what's happening to that .25%. And what's before you tonight is increasing that way another .40% to .55% of that. Now, on the county level, there's sort of several projects that are getting, sometimes it's easy to mix up. The county council can vote on their own by statute to raise the fractional rate, like .2%, that's as much as they can raise it. And several years ago, the Indiana legislature created that, passed legislation regarding that, to allow counties to build new jails. We need a new jail in Madison County, we needed a new jail for a long time. And the joke I always tell about that is, I grew up, my dad was on the sheriff's department here in Madison County, and I remember going to the sheriff's department as a kid and Scott Mellinger was the sheriff, and they talked about they needed a new jail. And you're 30 years old and Scott Mellinger was the sheriff.
Scott, and he's still talking.
And, but we're far past due for new jails. And that really is, while it's done on the county level, it affects everyone in this county. It affects all the municipalities. But part of this .3% public safety tax would, on the county level, not any of the money that Pendleton or any of the other places would receive, has to go to that jail project as well. But the last page of these documents that I provided you is just a kind of a rough estimate because these are local income taxes that they're earning year to year and so forth. But this is kind of a rough breakdown of what that would look like in the revenue that Pendleton would receive on an yearly basis, which is roughly about 237,000 as Pendleton's population continues to grow, which it is, that percentage of that pot is going to get bigger as well. And the bottom of that page just shows the tax burden that that would have on the average taxpayers of certain income levels. That chart shows both the correctional rate which the county council would move, as well as this public safety rate that we're talking about right now. So the cumulative effect of both of those taxes is .5% total from our Madison County's length of 1.75% to 2.25%, which is still a local income tax level that's lower than about 26 other counties in Indiana. And total, when you look at all the taxes that we pay on a county level between property taxes and so forth, that would only move Madison County from about the 46th highest tax county to the 40th highest tax county. So we're still, 92 counties in Indiana, we're still right in the middle. This is not a big jump. But it does have a big effect for all of the communities in Madison County. And the final thing I'll address is just how this money, this revenue can be spent, and it's governed by a statute that I mentioned in the second page of these documents. How it's, there at the bottom, what can the public safety be spent on? Indiana Code 6-3.6-2-14 defines public safety. And this council could spend those funds on any of the defined items that are under that statute. So this is not just tax money for any of the councils around the county to do whatever with, it's taxes that would be raised to spend directly on public safety in this county and each community. And there's no other way to spend that money. And like I said, the cumulative effect of this is safer in Madison County. Anyone have any questions?
Yes, if I could ask, thank you for your presentation. On the courts, I get to understand the courts and the prosecutor's office, I was thinking a percentage of the salaries for, say prosecutor's office for example, comes from the state, is that correct or is that incorrect?
A certain number of the salaries come from the state of Indiana. For instance Rodney Cummings is back here, the elected prosecutor, every elected prosecutor in the state of Indiana gets paid by the state of Indiana, and every chief deputy in the state of Indiana. So I'm not getting a pay, a pay increase or anything like that.
Right. Was not implying that.
Right, no, but a certain number of staff are paid by the state. But the vast majority of our office and every prosecutor's office across the state is paid by the county. And there are 11, we have, right now we have 11 full-time county paid deputies.
11 full-time, okay. Are you making a similar request to the state for additional funds?
Well, the state doesn't really have, there's no dog in the fight in that sense, it's a local problem. I'd be happy to ask the state for additional prosecutors, but all 91 other prosecutor's offices in the state were 90 because there's actually only 91 prosecutor's offices, but that's a whole story. But they would also be asking for additional state-paid deputies, and it's just not a reality. This has to get done on the county level and it's, you know, not Pendleton's problem, but it is your criminal justice system as well. And so there's only a certain percentage that the state can help. And we actually get additional state-paid deputies because we have the prison in the state in Madison County. But we also have to prosecute every crime that occurs in that prison, which is a lot of crime, as you can imagine, occurs in prison. So we have to, that's kind of the trade that they give us, but that happens in every county that has prisons and that doesn't, it's not cumulative, I mean that and the calculated deputies.
Okay. I guess you're prepared to me on the, because the state's going to, well, they had a surplus of funds for this year, so next year we'll get, maybe get some money back from the state?
Right. I would love to.
Looks like it would be appropriate to, for the 91 prosecutor's office in the state, that you would approach the state for some additional funds.
No.
They have the financial wherewithal to do that.
I would, I would love for that to happen. I doubt that it's going to.
Any other comments or questions from the public?
Thank you.
Thank you Andrew.
Deputy Scott Mellinger, Madison County Sheriff's Office. As Andrew said, this is a county-wide problem. It's not just county government, it's not just Hellwood, Alexandria, Markville, Pendleton. This is a county-wide problem. Prosecutor's office, prosecutors, all of the cases that come through from every city and town. So please don't think that because county office holders and employees are coming to you that it's just a county problem. It's a problem for quality of life for every citizen in this county. Criminal activity is at a, happens at a pretty high rate in our county. On the other hand, the system is handling this better than just about every county in the state in terms of law enforcement's doing their job very well. The prosecutor is doing an excellent job putting together good cases. Without those good cases, you don't get convictions. The courts are handling more than their share of cases compared to other counties. So while we do have some high crime rates, the system is working about as well as it possibly could to maintain that high standard. Public safety in general needs a big shot in the arm. I'm not aware of a specific public safety increase from a specific tax like this for at least 22, if not 23, 24 years. All of our budgets get squeezed. Your general fund gets squeezed because you're, each one of your different departments needs more funding. You've kept up with the public safety needs, especially here in Pendleton, you've got a fine police department, by squeezing money from other places, I know that. Just like at the county level, we do the same thing. The well has run dry though. And for us to maintain the high standards we have in this county, we need this monetary infusion, there's no question in my mind. And I've been doing this for over, thank you Andrew, 40 years, 40 plus years. We react, the police department reacts, sheriff's department reacts, prosecutor reacts, courts react. But to maintain a high quality of life for every citizen in this county, we need to be more proactive in spending way too much of our budget being react. So think about, think about the great job we could be doing even greater if we had the support and the resources to be more proactive. Recruiting and retaining good people in a county like Madison County, you don't have quite as much problem in Pendleton maybe as some of the rest of us. But recruiting good talent, keeping good talent is becoming extremely difficult. We're all losing people, good people to handle again. And quite frankly, for the police side at IMPD. And it's not just about salaries, it really isn't, that's part of it. But up-to-date equipment, up-to-date training, that atmosphere creates an agency where people want to come for and they want to stay. So it's not just about salaries, it's about the whole package. For as long as I've been doing this, I've not seen a chance for us to do what we can do if we raise this local option tax. Now the corrections tax, that's going to happen, it has to happen. The county council is the body that makes that happen. And then the increase in the lift is what partially helps move that project forward. But it also is going to be the opportunity of a lifetime for you to prop up public safety. Not only for Pendleton, but for everything that surrounds Pendleton because we're all supported by the government. So I just appreciate the chance to be here tonight. I appreciate everything that Andrew Hannah's done, he's done a lot of research on this. And I appreciate your consideration to raise this local option tax. Thank you.
Brian Williams appearing tonight in my role as chief public defender, not resident, not part of our member. And I'll address, the reason I stood up was to address Bob's concern about the state. But to give you an idea of how much we need this, it's rare that public defender, the judge, the prosecutor, the sheriff, the police department, all agree about where we are. That speaks volumes. But to address Bob's issue about the state, I won't worry with too much of this, but in my role as chief public defender, my primary job is to make sure that the Madison County public defender system is in compliance with the state. Because if we are, they reimburse the general fund in Madison County 40% of our expenses. So last year for instance, the state reimbursed about $800,000 to the county for public defender expenses. The, my primary job is making sure public defenders have the appropriate caseload. That's all the state really cares about is that public defenders don't have too high of a caseload, as everyone before me has said, crime is up. So I spend a lot of my time basically moving public defenders from court to court and trying to make sure we stay in compliance with the state. But every quarter that I submit the report, we are on the verge of being out of compliance. We always have one or two public defenders who are out of compliance every quarter. As crime continues to increase, we are in jeopardy every quarter of being out of compliance and losing 40%. So as I said, 800,000 last year, this funding would allow us to hire a couple of new public defenders, which would then ease that burden completely and we would know that we're getting 800 to a million dollars reimbursed from the state each year. So hopefully Bob, that addresses some of your concern about the state, but that's how critical it is to my side of the room. Thank you.
Thanks Brian.
Good evening council.
Good evening.
I'm Dave Poppy, I'm the unified court circuit judge, chief judge this year. I'm also Pendleton resident, proud to be one. I'm not going to repeat what the other folks have said, I'll be brief, but I do want to say a couple of things. We are at a tipping point. For many years there has been underinvestment in criminal justice system and we've managed to get things cobbled together and keep things rolling pretty well. We're at a point where I don't think we can do that anymore. This year the courts have lost fully one-third of their staff of court reporters, nine court reporters have resigned to take better opportunities other places. We're part of the big resignation that's hitting other labor markets across the United States. And these are difficult positions to find people to effectively fill. They're very technical positions, they're stressful positions, there's a very long training period, about six months to a year before a court reporter is really fully functional. To lose a third of our staff has been devastating. And we're not like a lot of other businesses where we can just shut the door for an afternoon if we don't have the staff. We have to have the courts open, we have to provide these services, and they're directly related to public safety. The judges can say whatever they want to up on the bench, but the police agencies, the other justice agencies don't know what's happened until that court reporter properly codes and records that information, puts it in the databases that are accessed by people around the state. So it's a really critical function and we're barely able to keep going at this point with the losses that we've had. So there's been a history of underinvestment and it can't continue if you expect to see quality public services and public safety. Secondly, I'd like to mention something Mr. Reskey has mentioned recently in the discussions about the post office, or BNP it was, I'm sorry, BNP closure here. Looking at the projected growth that our community is looking at, and it's a substantial growth curve that you're looking at. Part of responsible growth is making sure that you've done the advance planning to make sure we can provide the services, and this is a part of that. If we don't have an infusion of cash into the criminal justice system as a county and as a community here in Pendleton, we're not going to be able to keep pace. I just don't see any way mathematically it can work out. So I strongly support the council considering raising this public safety level rate. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks Judge.
Judge, could I ask a question please?
Absolutely.
What insurance do you have, and you probably can't answer this, say this gets approved, we get this increase through, what's to prevent the county council from cutting your current budgets back to use those, because they're under pressure too, to defund for different departments as been discussed, what's to prevent the county council from cutting county income tax on that because you get an increase on the income tax? Is there any insurance on that?
Well, I can't speak for the council, I would never presume to do that. They're going to do what they're going to do. There are some limits however, the courts have, I can only speak to the courts for Ole Miss as well. The courts have some unusual authority which we rarely invoke, which is the power of mandate. So if someone tries to take needed resources away from the courts, we have the ability to stop that and invoke a formal process to challenge that to the Supreme Court to stop that from happening. I don't think we'll come to that. The county council, although they're in severe dire straits financially, they're struggling to meet their needs, they recognize the importance of all these criminal justice agencies that have been here tonight, and they've voiced a strong support for making sure that we have the resources that we need. So I don't think they're going to just move it to another bucket, move the general fund money to another bucket and keep us where we're at. I don't think that's going to happen.
Okay.
Could a future county council do something unwise?
Yes.
But I think we have to have a bit of faith in each other that we're going to But I think we have to have a bit of faith in each other that we're going to do what needs to be done.
But you do have the power of mandate for the courts.
For the courts, we do.
Yeah.
I don't think we'll come to that. I think we'll find a solution by agreement before we'd ever have to get to that point.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions for us? Step away to the media, step away from answering. All right, thank you.
Andrew, I got a question for you.
Yes.
Because you've got all the numbers.
Sure.
I know you and I have talked quite a bit. I just want to make sure we, I understand, that's 51% of the communities. If Anderson and the county vote for, and we do, we're at 51%.
Well, if Anderson and the county did so by themselves, they'd be at 51, they'd be at 70-some percent, they'd be at 70-some votes. So yeah, it's just a matter of how that gets applied.
Okay. Thank you. Scott? Sheriff, I should say, I'm sorry.
But at this point, we feel like we need you.
Yeah.
There's no question. The largest city in the county, I can't speak for everybody, we have talked, but I don't have a guess what they're going to do. And if they don't support it, we need everybody else.
Yeah, sorry, I just want to fall off on that a little bit. The sheriff's exactly right. So if the county votes in favor of this, but Anderson does not, we need to really run the table with every other municipality in the county and have those votes so we can get to the 51%. So it is, it's not safe, Pendleton's vote here tonight is not important. It is very important. And it's the first one that will actually trigger that 30-day provision. So where we're sitting here now, I'd say it's the 28th, right?
Or day.
Yeah. So that triggers that 30-day provision, and the taxes have to be reported to the state of Indiana by the end of October. So if the delay happens from tonight, or for instance, if you were to table it, or you were to no-vote it, then it'd have to be the next council in line that would consider to raise it, and that would then start that 30-day period later, which could end after the November 1st, and then those taxes weren't going to affect, if at all, until 2023. So that's the importance of tonight, and that's the importance of right here. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Any other public input?
I'll let you go first. I guess I want George Gensper at the Pendleton Town Court. Many things affect us, but personally, I guess I'm interested in their feedback, the speaker we've had here. What happens to our system if it doesn't get supported? I heard money's lost, still overcrowded. Tell me all the other things that possibly could affect me as a citizen. I mean, I'm at all the speeches.
I guess my first thoughts are that, as I said, everybody's, everybody's general funds keep getting squeezed. Public safety is so important on every citizen's mind that as public safety needs grow, councils are going to have to figure out where to get the resources and support. And my experience tells me that that typically comes from the general fund. You can get a grant here or there, and we do, all of us do. But those are temporary plugs in the dam that don't sustain. So I guess my thought is, in general, all of our budgets have been squeezed the last 15, 20 years to the point there's no squeezing left. So you either cut public safety services.
That's what I guess I'm getting at.
Or you prop those up by cutting other city services. There's only so much to go around.
That's the best way to put it.
I hadn't planned on speaking, but you know, these guys, you have to show up. Town Pendleton, I mean, we're here Pendleton Town Council, the bigger picture though is all of the county. But locally, 4,287 population, there is no way we can put a tax burden on those people to come up with the amount of money that they're talking through this process. I mean, the lady who lives on Pearl Street, and the lady who lives on Madison, fixed income, you're not going to be able to generate those funds. An example of that is the town of Pendleton, we've always been right behind the eight ball. We're not exuberant in the law enforcement. In fact, I think I showed you the numbers in an email the other day, we're fourth, which we're actually more criminal arrests than ALI, and they have 16 officers. I think that's huge. Fortville salaries are growing. The chief down there makes $74,000, so while we're losing Hamilton County, we're getting ready to start losing officers to the handcuff county. We can't, we can't meet the needs. You know, I see on chatter all the time, why aren't the police doing this? Why aren't the police doing that? Well, two are working nights, two are working days, two are sleeping, two are off, two are on vacation, and you ask for reserves, I'm allowed 10, and I have two right now, which great guys, I'm not saying this that they're not bad, they're great guys, or that they're bad. But the pool to be a volunteer policeman anymore is rare. For some reason, in the state of Indiana, I think it has to do with unions personally, you can't pay a reserve policeman. You can pay a volunteer fireman, they get their run stiped. Volunteer policemen, they get nothing. Some departments don't even pay for their equipment. So you have an investment just to be a cop, and you can't even afford to do that anymore. So I'm super excited of this possibility. Chad and I have talked, you've been on the council, now how many, 12, 13? And we're constantly, I think anybody that sees the police numbers knows we are extremely frugal. We get the best bang for our buck. Under Captain Sidwell, boy, he could squeeze a terminal. And Lucas is following in that footsteps. So this is a way that we can get from making do to doing better. And on a county level, and I brag about this all the time with the chief's meetings, this is a rare county. And what I mean by that, there's some counties in that jurisdictional line, you do not cross it. And if something happens two inches over that line, this department doesn't go help. It's on them. And in this county, when I'm driving from here to Elwood, I'll stop and help out crash or when I only have one man on duty at night because someone's either off sick or they're vacation or whatever, lapel, Ingles come. So that's why you'll see different jurisdictions patrolling different jurisdictions. So this money, while it's jurisdictional towns, it's also going to benefit the whole. And Madison County is a rarity when it comes to that, how much support we do in the law enforcement business. I've always been proud of that. Any questions for me?
Good speech.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good night.
My name is Chad Blake. I'm actually the town council president for the town of Lapel. I came here tonight primarily to learn and find things out, but there's some things here that I just felt that I need to speak on as a citizen of Madison County and listening to what's going on. So for the town of Lapel, for example, we are a five-officer department. That means we have one person on duty all the time, and that can get a little dicey. This past Saturday night, I went on a ride along with my Saturday officer that was on duty on third shift. By 1:00 in the morning, we were on our third felony arrest out of Lapel. We had incident happen in town that required backup while we were on the way to the jail. Pendleton, Ingles, Edgewood, and the sheriff's department all responded. So because of the inability to fund our police department, our police department has a budget of about one-third of what your police department has, while we were gone on our way to the jail, three other communities lost all of their police coverage to come and help us. So I know there's two ways to even commit career suicide as a politician, and that is to raise taxes and eliminate police coverage. So this is a double-edged sword that we're dealing with here, but it's one of those unfortunate necessities that, again, one situation, because everybody is stretched so thin, can lead to that situation where we have communities without police coverage just because we're all behind the eight ball and don't have that coverage. So you guys are setting a very important precedent tonight with the vote to be able to get this in on a timeframe. You know, I can't speak yea or nay as to whether or not the entire council of Lapel, when it gets to us, what they're going to do, but I know as a citizen, you know, the $300 impact that it's going to have on my wages for the entire year is completely worth it. Because I've been there on a Saturday night and seen exactly what happens, the teamwork from his department, his department, their department, all coming together without question, without pause to help take care of the citizens of Madison County, if not just their towns. So thank you for giving me that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public input? I'll close the public meeting and restart the special council meeting. Okay, at this time, we're going to look at resolution R-21-13, modifying local income Counsel, any questions or comments or?
I think that's been a very good discussion among everyone seeking on this issue on a potential tax increase. I think something we have to think about here, though, for just Pendleton itself, is we look at this, you know, the, I'm not opposed to the discussion at all, that we passed the stormwater fee, you know, what, first of the year on local residents. If we do this, county council, if they approve for the jail, on top of this, in what, three or four months, we'll be looking at a fire territory for Pendleton, Paul Creek, Green Township, and Ingles on a contract arrangement. So we're looking at a lot of tax increase, potentially, for particularly for Pendleton residents. I think we need to be, I know we are, I know we're in tune with that, I think we need to be sensitive to your discussions, Chief Farr's discussion here locally as well, look at that, but I think we have to look at the, for Pendleton anyway, the larger tax burden that we're considering for the local residents and businesses for Pendleton specifically, and particularly when you look at the next year, when we're getting fire territory, which will be a significant increase as well if we do that. So we have to weigh all of that, in my view anyway, as we look at this specifically.
I think one of the, you're done, Bob.
Yeah.
I think one of the comments Chief Farr made, and listening to everybody here this evening, it's, I think it's great that this group come to this meeting and we know how important it is. But Chief Farr made, I think Chief said this, just making it do no longer cuts it. And that's where we've been for a long time, even here in Pendleton. Police department, we've, I've been very pro, get another police officer, get another police officer, and we have. I think we need to take a hard look at this, yeah. Fire territory's coming up, that's not going to impact most people, okay? And that's part of that whole plan. Personally, I don't see how we could not pass this. That's my own opinion. Listening to what sheriffs talked about, the judges, what Andrew's talking about, these numbers, it's astounding, really, when you look at Madison County as a whole, you know, and Chief Farr and I talk about this a lot, when something happens in town, and my comment is, never happens in Pendleton. Well, it does. But we've handled it, he has handled it, the department has handled it, and we have lost some good police officers, young police officers, because of salaries. And believe me, I push to get them more and get them more, but as Sheriff Mellinger said, there's just so much money in that pie. If you take it there, you got to take it from someplace else. And this here is, personally, I think that's a plus for the county and for the town of Pendleton. Any other comments?
Hey, Chad, I'd like to say something.
Sure, Steve. I'm sorry.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for not being there tonight on such an important meeting. I just didn't want to get everybody else sick, so that's why I'm taking the Zoom. I wanted to say that I'm very much in favor of this tonight, and I don't want to confuse people into thinking that this vote tonight has anything to do with the fire territory. Those are two separate issues, and we have to realize that this is a separate vote, and we haven't even got the numbers back for the fire territory. So we just need to concentrate on the task at hand, and this is voting on tonight, it has nothing to do or correlate with the fire territory that will be coming up here shortly.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to have a motion on resolution R-21-13 to modify the local income tax.
Can I make a motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Okay. Got a motion as second. Roll call vote, please.
Marissa Skaggs?
Aye.
Steve Denny?
Aye.
Robert Jones?
Aye.
Shane Davis?
Aye.
Jeff Bab?
Aye. Good job. Okay, at this time, we're going to go on with some other business. Anybody who wants to leave, you don't have to sit there and listen, it's boring, ruts in the middle. But I appreciate everybody coming.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome to stay if you want to.
We appreciate you. This is a big deal.
Yep, yep.
And wearing that cup shirt, you're taking it like a champ just to do it.
That's true.
See you, Lucas. See you, Sammy.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 sure, sure.
I'm sounding the sirens as they went red.
Okay. I'm going to close the special town council meeting and open a public hearing regarding the establishment of Historic Preservation Commission Fund and additional appropriation for the stor-, well, that's lawyer talk, 100%.
Any final word?
I only got your tree.
Why don't you start on this, Jeff or Scott?
Sure.
Scott?
What, go ahead. 2111 in front of you is a, is to establish a Historic Preservation Commission Fund, and I think Kayla and Scott know more about the purpose than I do, but the idea is, is to move $250,000 out of your food and beverage money, which is currently in the grants and donation fund, into a newly created Historic Preservation Commission Fund for, I assume, facades and things of that nature in the historic district. And it's much easier to do it this way, but before you could actually transfer the funds, you'd have to create it, you have in front of you the 2111, which would create the fund, and then the 2112 would authorize the clerk treasurer's office to transfer $250,000 from the donation and grants fund into the newly created fund. So you have two resolutions in front of you tonight. Strictly speaking, the public hearing is only on 2112, moving money out of the donation and grants to the Historic Preservation Commission Fund. But it's certainly acceptable to combine it all together. I only see one person here from the public, I don't know if we have anybody online, but...
Any pub, any, yeah, any body?
I'm sorry. Respect for obvious reasons.
Scott Slade, would you like to ask any questions?
He's just taking notes.
Kayla, did you have anything else to add? Because you're the creator of all those.
Yeah. Just so, it's part of the record, this $250,000 was applied for from Madison County Food and Beverage Tax Funds in 2019. After a joint meeting between the RDC and the HPC, it was decided that the redevelopment, sorry, redevelopment efforts should focus on grant opportunities and support opportunities. And we did receive $250,000 to invest in our downtown business district, which is also our local historic district. That way, local building owners can come and apply for funds through our HPC and get those funds to do a small of a project or up to a $50,000 award, if that's what they would prefer to do. That way, we could... That way, we could fund smaller projects than the state grants we're looking at. So if you want to come in and see if we can lend, say, new, three new second-story windows, not a full facade renovation, but just those three new windows to really give the second story a little bit more historic appeal, this is the grant. So like I said, it's a local mini facade grant, more or less. And that's what, that's what the point of this is, and that's the, the origin of those funds. We just received those here this last, over the course of this last year, and it encouraged us that we need to set up a Historic Preservation Fund to receive those.
Just for clarification, when you said businessperson comes in and applies, it can be the small amount or the fifty thousand, is that a matching?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought.
Thank you.
Any comments from the council?
Good, good project. And these two resolutions go hand in hand.
They do. Once you pass them, then you can pass well. And I just want to bring up one thing is that the, my understanding, and Kayla may be able to correct my, my errors here, but the, the Historical Preservation Commission is currently operated out of a sub-fund in the general fund.
That's correct.
And has approximately twenty-six thousand dollars in it. At some point in the near future, maybe your, probably not your October meeting, but your November meeting, there will be a request and transfer to move this HPC's money out of the general fund into this new restricted fund for HPC purposes only. Just an accounting exercise, make it a little harder on Willie, but nobody cares about that.
Okay, at this point, if there's no more public comments, I'll close the public hearing and reopen our special meeting. This time, resolution R-21-11, resolution to establish the Historic Preservation Commission Fund.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Do we have to do the roll call vote?
Technically, yes, because there's a remote.
Okay.
Okay. Let's get the remote first. Steve Denny.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Chip Bab.
Aye. Resolution R-21-11 is approved. Now, resolution R-21-12, additional appropriation for the Historic Preservation Commission.
Make a motion to approve R-21-12.
I'll second that.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Steve Denny.
Aye.
Robert Jones.
Aye.
Marissa Skaggs.
Aye.
Shane Davis.
Aye.
Chip Bab.
Aye. Resolution R-21-12 is passed. Any other public comments? She's leaving because she's done made her man. Okay, in the meeting. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, cool.